On YouTube.
Hi, good morning, everyone. It's July 24th. It's 10 o'clock in the morning, or 10:04. And I'd like to welcome everyone to today's special board meeting. And we, I'm going to ask, let's see here, who do we have? I'm going to ask Mrs. Drawlet to please lead us into the pledge of allegiance. Will you please do that for us? And you'll have to unmute yourself, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. You will join me? And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Drawlet, for leading us today and today's flag salute, and welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Great. So we have, at this moment, we're going to go into public comment, and so I have over 35 letters to read, but we won't be reading all of them. We will read a handful today. All of them are related to the topic that was discussed last Tuesday, which was reopening our schools for the fall of this year, and we will enter every letter into the record. And we will also, to accommodate some of you who have written, we will select a few others for next Tuesday's meeting. Today's discussion is about the strategic plan that is going to be presented for our school, and it's in the form of a study session for the board to first to have an opportunity to first review it and have a discussion about it. So that was the intent of today's meet, for today's meeting. And, you know, we thank everyone who's, of course, written in. So I will begin with a few letters. Please bear with me while I change gears here. The first letter comes from Beverly Hills High School counselors. Dear Ms. Hacker, Mrs. Marcus, Mr. Margot, Mr. Spitz, and Mrs. Walker Schuman, and student board member, Mr. Krishanian. We are seeing information regarding COVID-19 evolve. Sorry. While it is true that we now know more than we did in March, there is still much more that is not known. There is, however, one scientific fact that we do know: adults are more at risk from this virus than children are. Knowing this, it is baffling that the board would insist that staff work from school with other staff members present on site. The high school counseling office is shared among eight employees. While we each have our own office space, most do not have windows to allow fresh air. The building in which we and other teachers are housed has antiquated ventilation system with questionable filter maintenance. This could allow the potential spread of COVID-19 among staff if someone onsite is infected, even if asymptomatic. New studies are showing that air conditioning within the same office building can play a critical role in the spread of the virus because recirculating aerosprads infected microdroplets. Per CDC website, the failure and malfunction of the ventilation system may expose those within its confines to exposure to airborne contaminants. COVID-19 certainly falls into that category of airborne contaminants. Each time that returning to school has been discussed, the board has offered parents the choice to do what is best for their children and families. The board is wisely choosing to avoid any possible death or serious illness of students by not having them return to school in person until it's completely due to do so. This option needs to be extended to your staff as well. The CDC recommends that employers implement telework and reduce the number of employees in offices as effective measures to reduce the spread of COVID-19. The LA County Public Health reopening protocols for K-12 schools states under Section A, "Work processes are reconfigured to the extent consistent with academic requirements and student needs to increase opportunities for employees to work from home." End of quote. Dr. Bregge has repeatedly referred to these protocols as public order that must be followed and has stated that these are not guidelines. Requiring your staff to work on site is certainly not increasing opportunities to work from home. Again, it is baffling to your staff that you are insisting that you must work on site. We are here, we are imploring you, please do not ignore science. Los Angeles County has recently seen a surge in number of COVID-19 infections and hospitalizations and is on the verge of receiving another stay-at-home order. You have already decided that the acceptable number of student COVID deaths or illnesses caused by, caused, I'm sorry, you have already decided that the acceptable number of student COVID deaths or illness caused from being at school is zero. The acceptable number of staff COVID deaths or illnesses caused from being at school should also be zero. Your staff deserves a choice. Please allow us the courtesy to choose the location that permits us to perform our jobs and also protect ourselves and our families. Thank you. Kat Blanco, Kristy Bond, Janice Hart, Sarah Hustley, Greg Jackson, Hannah Ziberberg, all Beverly Hills High School counselors. Thank you for your submission. The next letter comes from Suzie Wallach. Dear Smichael and Board Education Members, I am writing to all of you this morning to ask that you please keep distance learning in place for all of us until it is completely safe to come back. I am well aware of how much work you have been all doing, especially since March. There are so many of us who are one or more risk, in the one or more risk categories, and it is really not safe for us to go back, no matter how much cleaning and separation is done. At BV, we have two bathrooms in the offices that almost all staff uses. People will be removing their masks and gloves when they use these facilities. Please let us work from home. One more thing I would like to say, you all know I never keep my mouth shut on something important. How about offering the golden handshake to certificated as well as classified staff? You might just find this suggestion a good one for the current situation for all of us. Thank you for listening. You are all aware I moved here 42 years ago for our schools, Beverly Hills Unified School District near our city, and I have, and have been an integral part of my life since 1978. With great admiration, Suzie Wallach. Okay, the next letter. The next letter comes from Michelle Siskin. Thank you, dear Mrs. Hacker. Thank you so much for all of, all you and the board members have done, considering the reopening of our schools in August. I'm sure you received many emails, and I wanted to put it in my voice. I ask you to please consider the option of teacher choice to allow teachers to teach from the classroom or to teach from home. I personally feel the safest option for all would be to, would be for the teachers to teach from home. I understand some would prefer to teach from the classroom. The fewer people on campus, the safer, the safer the environment is for anyone. If I were forced to go into school each day despite knowing that cleaning has been going on, I would be worried all of the time about contacting COVID-19. I want to be able to be safe and healthy all year so that my students have the consistency they need. I always do. As I always do, I will put great effort to making this year a wonderful learning year for my students. I realize you have many demands on you from different perspectives, and I don't envy your position or make, of making this decision. I just see teacher's choice as being a win-win situation. I ask you seriously consider this option. Thanks for listening, Michelle. Thank you, Mrs. Siskin, for your email. Okay, the next letter I have is from Mr. Schmidt. Members of the Beverly Hills School Board, I hope you are all safe and well. I am emailing again to asking you please allow teachers the choice of working from home or school. I am sure you are getting several emails and numerous public comments for the study session with similar logic and sentiment. So I will keep this brief. Please consider the message being sent to the teachers by mandating working from home, both the mental and physical toll in short term and long term. Please consider the message you could send to the teachers and community by offering teachers the choice. We value our teachers' safety. We trust our teachers to provide our students quality, quality and rigorous education. We believe in you and support you. I look forward to hearing your decision and rationale for making it in the upcoming board meetings. Take care, John Schmidt. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for your email. That's three minutes, sorry. Sorry, Mrs. Castle. Thank you, though, however, for submitting. And we will read one more, and then we will enter the rest into the record. Let's see here. I have one from Gina Schmidt. Dear members of Beverly Hills School Board. Well, here we go again. I am once again begging that we be given the flexibility and respect to be trusted to do our jobs. At this point, I feel as though we can start the year off one of two ways. We can put aside all the horrible comments. Parents have spent the summer posting on various social media outlets, knowing we have the support of our district and our Board of Education to do our jobs. We can feel respected as educators who are heartbroken that we're not welcoming our students back in person, but are forced again to make the best of a bad situation for the kids since they they're the ones that matter most, and even the distance learning is exhausting and horrible. We will be there for the kids with smiles on our faces because we were treated like professionals. Or we can feel like we're not respected and we don't matter. This is the first message we will hear at the start of the school year. The message will be loud and clear. You did a terrible job last year, so we need to hold all of you accountable this year. It doesn't matter if it puts you in danger. We have Band-Aids for that dam. We'll have the appearance of safety, and all we care about after squeaking wheels, after all we care about are squeaking wheel parents, end of quote. We did start in already difficult situation, feeling beaten and bruised before we have even started to put in our 180 days. We have, we can have no excitement or enthusiasm for this year and drag ourselves into our buildings each day and feel like prisoners paying our debt to society for a crime we did not commit. The choice is yours. I know which teacher I want my boys with. I know what tone I want to set for my staff, but that's just me. I teach kindergarten, and I love the idea of everyone getting along. I know clearly that I would do what I would do, but this choice isn't mine. Listening only matters when it's followed by actions. Thank you for your time, Gina Schmidt. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt, for your email. And I am going to end there on that note. As mentioned earlier, we are going to record everyone's letters into the record, and I will select a few again for more reading during, at our next board meeting next Tuesday during public comment. We thank everyone for writing in. But, you know, we do have over 35 emails, and we, we have a set amount of time that was set aside for today's discussion. So thank you again. We're going to move the meeting forward at this moment. Let me just switch gears here. Okay. I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I will move to approve the agenda.
Okay, and I, I heard Mr. Spitz and Mr. Margot at the same time, so I
I'll second that you give it to Mr. Spitz.
Thank you. I was going to give it to both of you. Thank you for that. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, great. Okay, the motion is passed, and now we will begin discussion. I'm going to turn it in over to Dr. Bregge. Is that right, Dr. Bregge? Will you be leading us in this discussion?
Yes.
So I just want to reiterate for the record, for those, there seems to be a little bit of confusion today's. The purpose for today's meeting is to discuss the strategic plan, and it's a study session, really, and that's the first purpose we're here. So, Dr. Bregge, it's all yours. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just need to have the screen ability to share. Thank you. Can everybody see the screen okay? Great. Let me just go back. Sorry. Not start where I wanted it to. So I want to thank everybody for this opportunity. This strategic plan has been something that we have been working on since December of 2019, so this is pre-COVID-19 work. And I know the, the elephant in the room, so to speak, is, you know, there's, there's so much going on that, you know, why are you, why are you doing this now? Why are you bringing this to our attention when, you know, there's other things that, that are more of a priority? And I just want to just tell you that and share with you that, you know, the COVID-19, the pandemic and the work that we're doing, that is a priority and always has been. This is a project that we've been working on for quite some time, as I mentioned. And, and I, and I do want to add that, that, you know, strategic planning, the, the whole reason behind the strategic planning piece is, is for times like this. This, this, there's no better time than when you're in an unpredictable climate that, that you need direction and that you need alignment. And so it, it really comes at an interesting time because, as unpredictable as it is, we really have to focus on the work and the alignment. And so that's why we have made it a priority to include this in on our work. This isn't replacing anything. This is in addition to. And so we've been working very hard on this plan throughout the COVID period, as well as a variety of other things. So I just want to set the stage for that, that why you even do strategic planning. It's more than just a roadmap. It's about alignment, and it's about planning and accountability. And so there's no better time to do that than this current time. So I do want to thank everyone for attending today, and this is a draft plan that we're going to share with you. We've been working with Total School Solutions and Dr. Bonnie Drole, who's with us today. And we're going to walk you through our process and how we have arrived at where we have today and how we have begun the planning process and the alignment piece and the accountability piece through our strategic planning. And it really began with, with our reconfiguration plan, which was something that, that we had been working on now for the last two, two and a half years. And so that was the beginning of our strategic planning process was our reconfiguration plan. It was important at that time for the structures to be in place before the planning and alignment began. And so now that that shift has happened and has happened successfully, this makes it a great time to move forward with, with our planning. So in the beginning, we just have an intro.
Can I just interrupt? If you make that page full screen, it will be easier to read for everybody.
Thank you for that reminder. Thanks. So we're going to walk you through this process. You're going to hear a lot of voices today that will give you an overview of where we are with our goals and objectives for the next school year. And so I do ask, though, since there's, there's so many people and we can't see every single face on the screen, that, that the people that are speaking today, if you would just say your name, just introduce yourself before you start speaking so that everybody knows who is speaking and doesn't have to start searching pictures and things like that. So this document has, this is the full document that has all of the backup information, all of the information that, that you can look at for your review, and we will just summarize and highlight for you the areas that we're looking at for the next school year. And we're going to have Mrs. Marcus. No better person to have on your strategic planning team than a retired teacher and board member. And so we'll have Mrs. Marcus kick us off this morning.
Of course. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to say, I'm sorry that Merle Bauer, who was a member of the team, is not here this morning to share this, and I really respect her and what a wonderful teacher and what a reputation she had when she taught at Beverly Vista. So I hope all is well with Merle, and I wish her well, and I hope she stays safe. Every, to get quickly, I, a firm believer of, if you can read what's on the screen, I don't need to read it for you. So in the interest of brevity, I just want to mention that all strategic plans would begin with the mission and a vision. And of course, ours has been there and been developed when we did reconfiguration. So it's up there for you to see. It hasn't been changed. It was presented to you a long time ago. The district core values, which I like to think of them as the column which will hold up the district mission and what you're trying to achieve with these core values. And you can see that they're called what they are and what specific words we look to, to explain them. So the, the, there's seven up there, up there, and there are seven core values that we use to try to develop the district plan, the strategic plan. And I've tried to think of some way that you could always remember them, but they're there for you to see, and you can see that the words that explain them all fall in line with the name itself. So I think that they're pretty much self-explanatory, and I don't think I need to go into them. If I could see the next page, thank you very much. The priorities are the things that we really want to stress for the total program, the total strategic plan. And there are three very distinct priorities. One, of course, is the students and their education and their preparation for the future. So everything that's in the strategic plan addresses that particular priority. And you will see them as you go along in the strategic plan. So the second one, of course, very important, is the budget and facilities, and I believe you will see those also. To be very honest, I have just, ago I was on the committee, this was the one area that was not really addressed in the beginning and has been addressed since I was on the committee. I tried to read through that last night, but everybody agrees that you cannot have a school district without a budget, and we school district without a budget, and we do need those facilities, and we need to keep them up to date. And we need to keep them so that they are safe and they're operative. So that is the second part. Going back, then the third part is, of course, community relations. A very big important part is to keep all of our stakeholders engaged. And of course, we're talking about teachers, administrators, staff, parents, and so on. But of course, included in that is also the community and the community, including the media, the business, the city, and colleges and universities. So these priorities, the students, the budgeted facilities, and the community relations are very important to the strategic process. So I think that that will be what I had to say about it. I don't know if Dr. Braggy had anything to add, but I think I I covered what was part of that report. Thank you.
And Dr. Drolle, are you taking this section?
I forgot to unmute. Sorry about that. I'm Dr. Bonnie Drolle, and I work for Total School Solutions. And I was a facilitator throughout the strategic planning process. So I'm going to be going through the next couple of pages with you that involved how many people and what was involved in proceeding with the strategic planning process. So I want to start with the Local Control and Accountability Plan, the LCAP priorities. That's a requirement for the state. And it's very important that the LCAP, the strategic plan, and school site council plans all are in alignment. As Dr. Braggy mentioned earlier, that the strategic plan should be an alignment document so that everybody's working in the same direction all the time. And so we were very cognizant of what the LCAP required. And we made sure that all of the action plans that we developed can now just be put into the LCAP, and there won't be any disparity between the two documents that that need to be fulfilled. Next page, please. So the strategic planning process should involve as many people as possible in order for it to be successful. So when I met with the cabinet, starting in on the phone in December and moving towards in person when we were able to do that, it seems like a lifetime ago, we were able to design a unique strategic planning process because every district, every organization is different. And we had to look at what was the possible way for us to continue. And then when the coronavirus hit, we really had to adapt and be flexible in how we proceeded with the strategic plan. And so as we discussed how we would start and and have that inclusion, have as many people as possible, we decided to have individual focus group meetings. And there's a list there of all the groups that I met with throughout the month of February. And every group was then able to see what other groups had talked about. So when I met with the groups, the first thing we did was to take a look at the vision and mission and have people talk about how the vision and mission were actually being implemented in the district. This was a very positive way to begin, have them talk about all the good things that were happening in the district, have them support the vision and mission. Many of them had seen it for the very first time. So after we set the stage, looking at what we wanted to be happening with the vision and mission, then I took them through a process that's called the SWOT. A strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats was performed for each group. And so each group then had an opportunity to brainstorm during their period together of what are the strengths of the district, what are the weaknesses that could be facing us, what are the opportunities that are out there that maybe we haven't had an opportunity to access yet? And then what are the threats that were coming at us? And of course, none of us saw the coronavirus at that point, but we were looking at other options of private schools and charter schools and the possibility would vouchers be available, etc. All right, we can go to the next page. And somehow my screen just disappeared. Hold on, please. There we go. So when we got with the focus groups, they had quite a bit to say. And I know when I met individually with the board members, I showed them all of the charts that came from all of those groups. So all that input was very important. I typed it all up for so that it could be part of our data analysis. So that was the second step that we went through. We looked through all of these documents, and you'll see that the second to the bottom bullet is the SWOT results. And so we had quite a bit of information from previous reports, previous audits. We had the input from the community. We had input from the staff. We had the draft governance handbook from the board. I won't go through every single thing, but you can see it was quite in-depth, all of the reports that we looked through, excuse me. All right, next page. Then after we had all of the SWOT information, we had all the information from all those individual audits and reports, then the district team was divided into small groups to review that data and develop possible three-year goals, excuse me, that reflected what the data said. And so they worked very diligently, looking through the reports that were assigned to them, looking at all of the SWOT data and what all of the community people had shared with us to come up with what they projected as possible goals, three-year goals. The district team looked at all of those. We talked about them. We changed some wording. Then we decided that those would be the action plans. Once the, I mean, excuse me, the goals. Once the goals were decided, then the groups were sent back to develop one-year objectives for the three years. So there would be as many as three different objectives and an action plan only for this next school year. And so as each groups did that, we got back together again. We took a look at all those action plans, again, added and deleted and even came up with some other action plans that weren't in the original one. And as you know, the strategic plan needs to be a flexible document. So even as we were developing it, we were adding some things to it. Once the action plan was then finalized, we completed the costs, and they were attached to each action plan, which you will see as we go through that. And today, we're at the point where it's being presented to you in a study session for your input and to see if there's anything that we need to change. Okay, this, the next couple of pages I'm going to go through are basically the people that were involved. So the district team, you can see, was made up of cabinet, the principals. We had a board member, thank you, Mrs. Marcus, and Merle Bauer, who were very, very important in the process. Then I met with the school site co-administrators to get their input because oftentimes they have a very different angle than the principals do. From there, I went and met with two groups of teachers and from all of the schools. So the, this page shows the first group of teachers that I met with. And if you go to the next page, there we go. The top of the page, you'll see more teachers that that came at a second time. And then I met with classified personnel, which was very instructive. I loved meeting with the classified personnel. They had a lot of ideas and input from their point of view. Next group, I met with PTA and PTSA. They also looked at all the previous SWOT data that had been collected, added to it. The community members added even more from a very different perspective. So you can see we're starting to get a three hundred and sixty look at the district. Then we had parents of special education who came and talked and shared about their children's experience and what they would want to see moving forward. We had parents of English language learner students come in and talk about how their students were succeeding. And we had the parents of Title I students. And we only have two Title I schools at Hawthorne and Beverly Vista Middle School, which is why you only see those two schools on there. Next play, page, please, Dr. Braggy. Then my most delightful meeting of all was with the student body officers from Beverly Vista and from Beverly Hills High School. And, you know, those students have so much information about the district that they wanted to share. They were so excited to be included. They were very talkative. Several of them stayed after and just wanted to keep talking to me about the district and how they were personally doing. So it was a very exciting time to meet with the student body officers and get the view of the students as well as the adults in the community. And then lastly, I met with each individual board member and shared everything on the SWOT with them, took notes of what they were thinking that the strategic plan direction should be. And all of this information, then, as I mentioned earlier, I typed up and shared with the entire district team. So to the next slide, please, next page. So what did all of this get us? These are the abbreviated, you'll see, action plans later on. So these are the goals. These are three-year goals. And then each year's objective, as I mentioned, up to three objectives. You'll see in some of them, we've combined objectives, and I'll go through that. But the first one was, of course, the most important one, was our student growth focus and the goal for all students to have consistent growth in academic areas. And we're looking at one year's growth for one year's instruction. This next year, we're going to focus on mathematics. Then we're going to go into English Language Arts and Social Studies. And the third year is science. Now, I want to mention here, and I'm sure when Sarah goes through the action plan, she'll mention it also. This doesn't mean that we're not looking at all the academic areas. We're also including VAPA, Visual and Performing Arts. We're looking at PE. We're looking at all aspects of it, but our focus is going to be on mathematics, using all of the content areas for students to strive in mathematics. Our second goal was in the area of professional development because in order for students to grow, we need to have a professional staff that's willing to learn. And so we're looking at high-leverage instructional strategies and practices over the next three years. So for this next year, we really want to look at, you know, what is the intensive, what is the data that we have so far and what our teachers already know and are able to do? Excuse me. And we want to be able to really look and see where their needs are as opposed to just giving them things. So that intensive data analysis is going to be really important for the next year. Then, as you look at the different objectives, for the second objective, they'll be deciding, identifying what those instructional strategies are. And then the third objective for this very next year is, how do we incorporate PLCs into the schools? And then for, this is where there's an objective for multiple years, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three. We're looking at the development of effective PLC time. So we'll introduce it, let people get to know it, and then spend the next two years really making sure that that teachers are involved in professional learning communities in order to help students grow. Next page, please. Hello, there we go. All right, what, when I talked about our planning and taking a look at action plans, etc., one of the areas that we felt we needed to include was diversity and inclusion. That wasn't on our very first thought plane. So our goal for that is to really support a very positive diversity, equity, and inclusion climate at all of our schools and all of our departments. And the objective is to value diversity, equity, and inclusion and really looking at the learning culture that we have at all the schools. The next area was in the area of leadership, and our goal was to meaningfully engage staff to support the work of the district so that everyone, again, was aligned, was on the same page so we could go forward, that one person wasn't making all the decisions, that people had input, etc. So you can see that the first objective is about improving stakeholder satisfaction through collaboration and decision-making opportunities. And then as we move through the other objectives, it's about surveys and really, again, taking that three hundred and sixty-degree approach, making sure that everybody gets a chance to have some input into the strategic planning process, but also in how the district functions. And then the last one is to continue the surveys, three hundred and sixty-degree surveys throughout the whole strategic planning process. The next area was district culture, and we will create a positive district culture which promotes active learning, empathetic interactions, and maximizes community engagement. And again, all of these goals came directly out of the SWOT and all of those documents that we mentioned. So the first objective was to implement a system, norms, training, and support for all stakeholders. And the following year was to implement a new BELL schedule that bills in daily dedicated time to address social and emotional needs of all students so that they can all feel included into the school process. The last objective is on the next page. And that is for years twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three and to work collaboratively with stakeholders to continue and evolve that positive culture. The next area was construction of facilities, and the goal was to plan, construct, and modernize historical school sites in a manner that achieves the mission and vision of the district. So the first objective was to continue a fiscally responsible implementation of the facility's master plan. Then the next objective would be to be opening buildings B one and B two at Beverly Hills High School. And the third would be reopening of Elrodale Elementary School. The last on that page is maintenance and operations, and the goal is to provide safe, compliant, and quality school facilities to support the district's vision and mission statements. And the very first objective for this year would be to implement the five-year deferred maintenance plan and develop a preventive maintenance plan. And the other objective, which is a multi-year objective, would be to aggressively implement years two and three of the five-year deferred maintenance plan. Okay, our last area is in the area of technology, and we'll implement a systems approach to technology practices with a focus on stakeholder support, fiscal planning, and project roadmaps. And you'll see throughout all of these goals is we're really looking at collaboration and support from all stakeholders. So the objective for this one was to develop a framework for district technology that aligns with the operational and instructional goals of the district. And then from twenty-one to twenty-three, the objective is to build capacity for interdepartmental cooperation and operational excellence by monitoring cloud administration and building security operations, as you can see with with the entire objective. So you can see people did a lot of work. They did a lot of research. They really took a lot of information, and it went through a funnel to come up with these three-year goals, one-year objectives. And now we'll go to the one-year action plans, which will be implemented this year.
Hi, I'm gonna.
Hi, I'm gonna present about student growth's action plan. My name's Sarah Kaver. I'm the principal at Hawthorne School. Dr. Braggy, is it possible for you to get rid of the part on the right side of the screen where it says export PDF? It's just covering part of the chart.
I will see if I can do that.
Look on the little triangle on the gray bar. Yeah, right, between the two screens. Go down. Yeah, there you go.
There you go. Thank you. So I am excited to share about this. Dr. Drollet just presented about the goal, which you can see up at the top, which is that all students will have consistent growth in all academic areas. And it speaks to the goal of one year's growth in one year's instruction. And as she just mentioned before, this is a math-focused area. But we really want to make sure that you know that everything's happening in all subject areas. The way that the student growth is outlined is that the first chart is for all students. And then we broke down into special populations. And the special populations have specific action items that go to that population. So those populations are students that have IEPs, students with 504 plans, students designated as English language learners, Title One intervention, and those students that are in foster care. So you'll see that there's just some slight changes to that and additional action plans to those. But there's basically four steps to the action plan or four action items within this goal. And they are learning targets, academic language, problem-based learning, and tools for mathematical problem solving. And for the most part, all of those pieces can be spread into any subject area that, you know, middle school and high school teachers teach, any VAPA area. And they can start talking about, as we're focusing on learning targets specifically for this goal in mathematics, that we can also use those in Language Arts, and then it'll be a district-wide goal in future years. The idea is that we want to provide training on learning targets and student language of the standards. We want to make sure that there's some time spent in unpacking those standards to really understand that and speak to depth of knowledge questions, put together a pacing guide, and formulate common assessments, so that we're all on track. Basically, you can go through and see that the action items that say one, two, three, and four, they stay with each next chart. They just sort of talk about how it's the students in special education or with 504 plans that they would have those learning targets more aligned with their IEP goals and English language learners, that they're having support in their first language in order to support them in mathematics. I'm basically done with this part, unless you want me to dig a little bit deeper.
No, it's just, it goes slow, sorry.
No, it's okay. Just tell me if you want me to dig a little bit deeper.
There's a little bit of a delay.
Okay, Ms. Kaver, great job. Good summary. I like that. This is Mr. Bugbee, principal at Horace Mann. I'll be presenting on professional learning or professional development, depending on how you want to call it. The goal is to create a culture of professional learning based on student performance data, high leverage instructional strategies and practices, and classroom implementation in all grades. You got all that? Okay, objective one, each school will conduct intensive data analysis at least twice per year. Each school handles those a little bit differently, so we leave that up to them. Objective two, each school will identify at least two high leverage instructional strategies or practices that drive PD for that year. Objective three, all school administrators will receive training on the delivery of instructional leadership and effective PLC development. And objective four, during the second and third years, teachers will be trained on the development of effective PLC times. So the action plans you can see underneath involves rigor. And action plan two involves common assessments, which I know teachers have been working on for the past couple of years. Action plan three, performance data, like I said, looking at the data to guide our instruction. And number four, we love our educational acronyms, the good old-fashioned SWBAT, which stands for Students Will Be Able To Identify Learning Targets in Student-Friendly Language. And those are all goals. Most of those goals will be for the end of this coming school year. And then teacher training and development, teachers will work toward National Board Certification. We have several teachers that are in the National Board Certification Program. Their goal is to have their program completed by the end of 2023. I do have one question on this. If you could scroll back up. And it might be a quick question for Dustin. It said Title II funds of $25,000. Dustin, is that $25,000 over the three years or $25,000 annually for three years?
It's every year our Title II funds are replenished, and so it's annually.
Perfect.
Yep.
Got it. Thank you. And that concludes professional development.
All right, my section is next. This is Laura Chisholm, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. And I'm going to cover the diversity and inclusion portion of the plan. As Bonnie discussed, our three-year goal for this area is to develop and support a positive district and school climate that promotes diversity and equity and inclusion as it relates to race, culture, and individuals with exceptional needs. So our actions to support this goal will be accomplished by reviewing our curriculum and bell schedules as well as programs. And the targeted outcomes of this review will be building in time into our schedules to promote equity and diversity as well as inclusion for all families, students, and staff. Creating systems that give all participants a voice and a sense of belonging. And to create a district culture that helps all members feel welcome and supported, included, and valued. By addressing these needs, we help to foster a learning environment that fosters, that supports high academic standards and collaborative relationships. So as you can see, Dr. Braggy, if you'll scroll through, those are the four actions that we just talked about. Promoting diversity is the first one. Second one is advancing equity and inclusion. The third one will be to create systems across the district that help people feel that are intentionally, that intentionally ensure that people feel respected and included in the organization. And then we'll create and sustain healthy campus climates to provide that as well as across the district. This is very closely tied into the section that Mark will talk about next, which is school culture. After Dr. Braggy, sorry.
It's okay. So the leadership portion, in this, this goes back to, you know, I want everyone to remember just kind of how these were generated in an authentic way. So as Dr. Drolle had mentioned, that this was organic in the SWAT process, where people were asked to share their feelings about, you know, the district and where there were areas of improvement, where there were weaknesses and where we needed to improve. And sometimes that's, you know, you open yourself up sometimes when you do that. And it's, for me, I welcome that. Because what just had happened before we did this, we had our, what I like to call our schoology debacle. And it was, it was interesting, because what came out of those meetings authentically and very organically was that staff felt like they, we want more part of the decision-making and more engagement. And so it really hit home because of what was happening with our problems with schoology. And then we had, so it's just, it kind of tied nicely together, and it was a very consistent message. So the leadership goals and objectives were really focused around processes in place, because there really weren't any established systems and processes to incorporate staff development. And what was happening is it, many of the same staff members, you know, and thankfully, we have so many that will volunteer and be part of things. But we also found that there was the same people doing the same work. And while that was wonderful, we weren't really tapping into more collaboration in some of our decision-making. So that's where this came from. This is where the action plan was to move forward is is to really start looking at, you know, trying to find out more about the district and more of that 360 approach that Dr. Drolle talked about. And the survey part, Mrs. Hacker and board members, we talked about this many months ago, you might remember, because it's a need, is to be able to collect that information and that collaboration before decisions are made, even in the areas of making improvements in certain areas. So a survey process is certainly more extensive than just sending out a Google form. You know, there's a science behind the writing of a good survey. And so, and this takes a while to do that. But we want to do it in a way that is very transparent, so that this information will help not only the collaboration, but also help drive our decision-making. In addition to just doing surveys to find out information from staff about what's happening in the district, is that that process for decision-making. And so there, again, is a lack of a system or process for the type of decision-making. And so it's finding that model to do so, and we will tap into our staff to help us find a model that is much like a design model, where we can use this to make decisions, whether it's at the school site level or if it's at the district level, and one that's consistent and one that people can understand why we're making decisions around what we're making decisions about, much like the plan that we're putting into place. This is helpful, because this helps guide our decision-making. But when things are happening in our schools, and sometimes at the district office, I'll readily admit that we haven't used a process that is fully inclusive and that we're getting the opinions and input and feedback from people in our district. So these goals, this action plan for the next several years is going to show a new level of transparency and collaboration. And, you know, and this is something that, you know, strategic plans put you in a place where, you know, people are going to hold you accountable for this, and we're glad to put this in writing, because this is an area of improvement that I have seen in my last almost four years. But also that this came out in that SWAT information. So it's really nice when that all comes together and helps, helps kind of, you know, plan for the next step, that this is in alignment with where the district feels that we need to go. And Mr. Mead?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Braggy. Okay, so I have the privilege of talking about district culture. And, you know, having been here for a long time, I think culture is always something we can celebrate and improve on. So looking at a three-year plan, our goal will create a positive district culture, which promotes active learning, empathetic interactions, and maximizes community engagement. So looking at a three-year plan, we have three objectives over a three-year period. The first objective would be to implement systems, norms, training, and support for all stakeholders. Number two, we have an objective to implement a new bell schedule that builds in daily dedicated time to address the social and emotional needs of all students. Additionally, this time will be used to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. And in the third year, we have an objective, BHUSD will work collaboratively with stakeholders to continue to evolve our positive culture and create a more engaged and immediate extended community. So we do have action items, as discussed with our goals. And for example, customer service and empathy training for staff members, administration and staff alike. Review and update job classifications would be another thing. There are quite a number of ideas that we have. May mention the bell schedule as well. So there are a number of action items related to this, but those are the objectives over the next three years. Yep, I did that. That's one another thing. Work with our stakeholders and work on systems for communication between parents, students, and staff. And as you know, we are working on some branding and style guides just to help bolster school spirit. And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. This is Wade Roach. I'm your Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. I'm going to speak to maintenance and operations and facilities and construction. The board has really set the standard for maintenance and operations over the last year or so, really pushing us to develop an Afford Maintenance Five-Year Plan, which is going to be the funding for these goals and objectives. So we have worked with staff to create a five-year deferred maintenance plan to prioritize the needs that we have in this district. We have a lot of older buildings, older sites. So in the first year, our objective is to really implement the first year of the five-year deferred maintenance plan and really develop a new preventative maintenance plan, so that we don't get into the situation that we find ourselves in right now. And then over the next two years after that, we'll continue to work on the deferred maintenance plan. It'll change as we move forward and find different areas that we need to address. It is a living document, but we expect that it will be a roadmap for us as we address some of these issues. And we have allocated about $1.6 million, give or take, each year over the three-year period to address these issues. So next slide. So when we look at construction and facilities, I want to jump to funding. Of course, that's what I do as your business services assistant superintendent. I want to first say thank you to the community of Beverly Hills. Without Measure E and Measure BH, we would not be able to have a really robust facilities master plan that we currently have. So without this community support, we wouldn't really be able to do what we have put here in this construction facility strategic plan. So what we've done was to take our facilities master plan and really roll it into the strategic plan. So over the short term, we have some really aggressive goals related to Buildings 1 and 2 at the high school and El Rodeo Elementary School. We'll be focused on those two projects over the next year or two. And then we'll continue to work. We have Buildings 3 and 4 at the high school. We have the athletic complex at the high school. And then finally, in year 22, 23, the third year out, our goal is right now is to to open El Rodeo Elementary School. We're going to do all of this within the confines of the least-least back methodology to keep us within our budget. These are multimillion-dollar projects. There's always things that come up. But we have a wonderful facilities team. We have a very robust, as I said, facilities master plan. And we want to continue to stay on track and on target and on time with all these facilities developments, because we understand the stress that this puts on the instructional program, having some of these facilities down, and just the, it's just inconvenient to have construction on these campuses. So we're very aware of that. We're very aware of making sure that these construction projects are safe. And, but we want them to get finished in a timely manner, so that our students can enjoy the benefits of these new facilities. And I think that's it for construction and facilities.
Maya?
Yep.
Good morning, everyone. This is David Damico, Executive Director for Technology Services. And this will look familiar to you, because this is part of what I presented in previous study sessions around study sessions around technology planning and the importance of making sure that technology supports both the operational side of the district and the instructional, the day to day instructional programs. So the the larger goal for 2020, 2020 through 2023 is to implement a systems approach to technology practices with a focus on stakeholder support, fiscal planning and project roadmaps. And then the goal for next year or the objective for next year is to implement what an iterative framework for district technology that's aligned both to the operational and instructional goals. And an iterative, an iterative framework is is kind of what we're doing now with COVID that we're having to really rethink how we deliver devices and how we provision them and how we think about meeting students where they are because for the last three months and and perhaps into the future, we won't be able to see them every day as we're as we've done for many years in the past. And so the ability to iterate means that we have the ability to to think ahead and to keep our solutions flexible so that we can pivot when we need to. And then the longer term goal from 21, 2021 to 2023, our objective is to build capacity for cooperation between departments. As more and more things sit on our network, there's a need to have an awareness of all of the things happening on the operational side from maintenance and operations to construction planning and just the general overall maintenance and security operations that the district performs sort of, it's invisible to most people, but when the HVA systems aren't working or the fire alarms go out, people notice. And so technology has a bigger role than it has in, you know, it's growing and it's going to continue to grow. And then our action plan is to update the technology job descriptions in 2021 and then build capacity with our people so that we have depth and breadth with a small group, small and mighty. And you can see the the various activities there outlined in the in the matrix below.
Thank you, David. The the most important part of putting together any plan is the the follow through in the monitoring and in holding people accountable. Most organizations, if they attempt to do a strategic plan, it it doesn't become a livable, breathable document, and it ends up on a shelf somewhere in an office. We looked very hard to see when the last time our district did a strategic plan, we were unable to to find anything. I'm sure that there was one, but it has been quite a while. And I want to go back to what I said in the beginning, and that is that that, you know, we are a district that has been through a tremendous change. And so if you even just look at the last 10 years in our school district, you know, this has been, this has been missing. And so we're very pleased to be able to, you know, set this path going forward and the and to ensure that there's going to be some accountability and follow through to this to this plan. It only works if we all understand it. We have spent a great deal of time trying to streamline this plan so that it isn't a 200 page document, that it's in a very concise document, as you can see, that it's something that we can get our hands around. And as we go forward and we look at the accountability piece, which is really important, it has to be integrated, kind of embedded naturally in everything that we do. And so, you know, after when this is approved is when the real work begins. And so embedding this into so people really need to understand it. So it's not just staff, it's not just the Board of Education. It's 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 all of our stakeholders need to get an understanding of of what our plan is. And so like any good classroom lesson, you have to teach it and you have to do it in a way that's engaging. And so we have our work cut out for us after this is approved because we need to kind of go out kind of in the roadshow and and really start to meet with people. And whether it's our office managers, custodians, our teachers, community members, this is that we, this is the plan that we need to share and be transparent about. I would even say, just to give you an example of the accountability piece that I would propose after this is approved, that even our Board of Education agendas should be able to, we should be able to change our board agendas and actually have the items that are on our agenda actually relate and correlate directly to one or more of the goals in our strategic plan because we have to keep it alive. And this will change. A lot of this information is going to change. And so a as this gets rolled out and we begin to take a deeper dive in it and work with staff and work with our parent, it's going to change. So it's, you know, to keep this going and to keep it, you know, breathable and and something that we're all engaged, we have to keep revising this information and we fully intend to do that. I do want to say and just to offer a thank you to everyone that has worked on this and gave us input and the names were in the beginning. The real work of this plan is it's going to start after approval, but I would be remiss if I didn't go back and and say thank you to everybody that was involved because I know that I was part of a lot of these meetings and they didn't happen during the week. And a lot of them happened on weekends. And there were times I remember calling Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Bauer, and it was a Sunday afternoon, and we spent three hours. So it was a consistent process and it was always done when we could work this in. And many times it wasn't during the the day because we had all the other things that we were taking care of. But we're very proud of it. We know that there's going to be some feedback from the board and we're very open to hearing that and so that we can make any adjustments, changes, edits. And this time I would like to turn this over to President Hacker to help facilitate the discussion and feedback.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bregge, and to everyone for presenting this document to the board tonight and today in the morning, still morning, and to our community. I am going to, if you have questions particular to the document, a section, please address your question at this time. And maybe there was several presenters, so hopefully you've made note of who presented what section and you can ask them to to answer or to clarify any issues that you may or concerns you may have or just general questions. And Dr. Bregge, just just for our, just to be clear, all all across the board here, this document is not in its final form. This is the opportunity for the board to weigh in, correct? And to make recommendations or have clarifications before it's a final document, is that correct?
That is correct. And 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 just so everybody is aware that this is, you know, the the first time that this information is coming to the board as well. So I want to be very fair about that, that this is, you know, it's a it's a rather large document. We tried to streamline it, but I want to be fair that this is the first time the board is hearing information, including Mrs. Marcus.
Thank you. Okay, so since Ms. Marcus worked so much on this document, I think it'd only be fair to have her go first. And then we'll start with Mr. Margot and then we'll work our way around if that's okay with the board. So thank you, Mrs. Marcus, for leading. I I thought Mr. Margot was part of this committee. Did he not? I remember he was appointed, he asked to be part of it.
I was, I was politely disinvited.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, I'm happy that Mrs. Yeah, because I I thought we were going to have two board members. Okay, well, Ms. Marcus, thank you so much for being here and for leading this with on our behalf. So, Ms. Marcus, the floor is yours.
Thank you. As you know, since I was a part of it, I really was very instrumental in all of the parts up through the part with the educational portion with Dr. Kaber and Sarah Kaber and with Mrs. Dr. Drolle and myself when we worked on the academic portion of it and zeroed in on the math. And again, the rest of it, I've just been seeing for the first time also in a way. Well, though we did see it, but we didn't see it in its final form. I have a couple of comments. I think Dr. Bregge summed it up very nicely. I'm anxious to hear what the other members of the board say because it it, I think it, I would like to hear them. One other thing on the facilities and the operations of facilities and maintenance, I'd like to see the inclusion. I don't know that I saw it, but the the CBOC and the finance committees, I don't know that I saw those particular committees that were included in that. And I I would like to make sure that those are included in there. I again, I was waiting to hear from some of the members. I'd like to reserve some of my other comments till the end. But again, I'd like to iterate the fact that even though we zero in on one area, it is understood that we are working on a continuum during the three years and even beyond, that we don't stop in year 23, that it's going to continue on. So even though it may not say it there, that is something that is always in the back of my mind. And I would love to hear from the other people since I've had such an opportunity to be part of it, to what they have to say. So.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
President.
Dustin.
Sorry, just to answer Mrs. Marcus's question, on the very last page, we highlight from an accountability standpoint, all the committees that do oversee the district level work and facilities. The facilities, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and the Finance Committee are all listed in the last chart on the very last page.
Maybe are you talking about the page that includes the the continuing work with the committees like the Leadership Monthly, Quarterly, Semi Annually?
Yes.
Page 59?
Correct. Those are all the committees that oversee all of the district strategic plan and all the work that we complete as a district.
Well, I what I'm thinking of, I don't specifically, I see the Finance Committee. I do not see the CBOC.
But it's in column four, it's number three.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you for clarifying, Dustin. We're going to move on to Mr. Margot.
Thank you. It's it's a, it's a wonderful to have this document to help guide us. I I was thinking that had we done this document last year and then got saddled with this whole pandemic, you kind of have to put the document aside because everything you're planning for gets shifted. And I think people need to recognize that even creating this document within a pandemic is is pretty bold. And I appreciate everybody who's worked on this, including you, Mrs. Marcus, although you did not, you did not take my place, committee. I'm glad you were there. And no, I'm not going to let this go, Michael.
Waiting to say that, I think.
So let me, let me hit a couple of points and and I really, I mean, I would love a little more time, obviously, to digest some of the nuances in it. But some of the things that stood out to me is when we talk about diversity and inclusion, and Laura, you can answer this or anybody can go answer this question. Where it seems like we're 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 shoehorning in keywords, just to say we have these keywords in our document because we think that they're important, but I don't really see what we're going to do about this. You know, there's, there's, there were little things said, you foster a culture of this, you include diversity and equity. What do we actually, what does that mean to us as educator, as educators? What does that mean to us?
Great question, and Dustin and I will tag team this. What what our actions will be, our actionable items are, we will be reviewing our curriculum. We will, we will be building in programs. We will be training staff. So all of those things will happen within the context of of those actions, of what we're doing. Those are the actions that will lead to the items that we want to to build.
Correct. And I even add to it, Mr. Margot, is even those staff members that are listening or even the administration that is participating, you know, some of the features such as Goalbook provides and leverages up us opportunities to dig into literature, activities, and lessons around diversity and inclusion. And so that was even part of just the exposure training to Goalbook last Tuesday. So some of these conversations had already started at a very small level as we start to grow. You'll see more expansion and more vocabulary being added to this actual part of the strategic plan.
Part of Goalbook actually is, you can look at, you can link into, and it's called representation, and you can, you can have lessons that specifically break down, showing representation of different groups in in the lesson that you're that you're teaching. So it provides that access. The other piece, I just wanted to piggyback on this before you respond, Noah, is that the piece I said, and I probably was talking a little bit too fast, is that we're going to also review our bell schedules to be able to build in the time to present these lessons and to teach, to present them to staff and students.
Yeah, Mr. Mead touched on that, so I appreciate that. That's, that's actually really thoughtful. And I think in a, when we talk about changing and evolving education, those are things that have to start coming into play more because perhaps students are not getting that kind of sensitivity training at home, per se, we can say that, they're not being able to speak. And especially at the high school level where where teenagers kind of rebel against speaking to their parents, they have a safe haven to have those conversations and to explore those feelings, how we got here, why these things are happening. I didn't, I didn't drill, I didn't drill down into that section, the actionable items, but is what you just discussed about you're already starting with the training and Goalbook, is that somehow expressed in that action part? Do we, are we representing those, what you're saying? Because it feels like we have more of a plan and detail about this diversity and inclusion than just the goal part.
Yeah. Actual items under number four, it actually specifically mentions the bell schedule to schedule, it says during the dedicated time in the new high school, high school bell schedule for for social and social emotional learning and diversity to also be part of this program.
Okay. Yeah, so as more, as more, I don't want to be generic with this issue. I think it's too important of an issue to just be generic with. So the more we can have in the plan that's tangible, that people can look, the the public can look, stakeholders can look and say, okay, this has now become something important to the district. This is not a throwaway item, so we have to really pay attention to it. I like the accountability factors. I hope that we can include this as, you know, obviously, we're going to be accountable for everything in the plan. That's what I do appreciate about the plan. But let me move on. District culture, I'm on page 18, if anybody's looking, but district culture, we will create a positive district culture which promotes active learning, empathetic interactions, and maximizes community engagement. I think somewhere we need to start expressing stuff about environmental. I think environmental has to be part of the dialogue now. I didn't see it anywhere in the document. It's just my opinion, but you know, the rest of my colleagues can weigh in. It's it, I believe it kind of started with that push for bottle fillers at Hawthorne kind of was was the first time that I saw teachers and students getting together and trying to say, hey, you know, we have an issue here, we want to eliminate plastic from our campuses, let's start talking about refillable bottles, let's start investing in these things. So it started, and I know a lot of our, a lot of our buildings are trying to be built more, you know, title 24, title 21, title 24, forget the title for for environmental issues. But I just, I I think I would like to see that, you know, going green as part of the district culture. When we talk about district culture, I think that that should be something we should be looking at as a school district. Moving on, actually, one second, moving back for a second, for professional development, for the goal about creating a culture of professional learning based on student performance data, high leverage, instructional strategies and practices and classroom implementation in all grades. I think this is one of the biggest areas of concern because if we continue, even though we have a plan in this and we have, we have accountability, if we continue to fall into the trap of of just these items, then I don't think we're going to move forward enough as a district. I think we're going to get caught with, let's take, make sure our faculty, our staff can do this, right? But we're not propelling them to to think outside the box with instructional strategies. Or are we, is the question mark? But this goal doesn't really implement anything in the in the sense of, we're going to start doing things differently because the way we've been doing it, and this is the problem of being around as long as some of us have, is that we're not really getting change. We're not really seeing the change we want. And something has to, something can't be the same if. And something has to, something can't be the same if we want to see change, we know the definition of insanity. So professional development is an area that I think we can start affecting greater change in um, practices, in delivery of instruction, in order, in order to see results. You know, there's, 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 we can, we can't control the standards, per se, but we can control how we deliver them, and that really comes under professional development. And I think that's an area we need to really focus on, saying, what are we going to do here that's different? That, that, because you could take this goal and say, well, we've been doing this stuff for the last three years, for the last five years, for the last ten years, we have been using data, we have been using high-level instructional strategies and practices. Certain teachers are going off and, and, and getting board certified and getting, you know, uh, uh, doing the LMU math program, you know, we do things like that. So, so if we keep doing this without a little clearer definition of how we're gonna push ourselves, I don't think we're gonna get the results we really want. So I will leave that one alone, I will say that on um, on page, about the Facility Master Plan, on page nineteen, um, why was B-three and B-four left off the three-year goal? Anybody wanna uh, jump in on that one?
We could definitely put that uh, uh, into the plan, uh, I think that we expect some, a lot of uh, progress in B-three and B-four. Oh, we're not sure exactly it'll be finished uh, within the third year, but we can uh.
I, 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 I would venture to say it's going to be by twenty-twenty-three, is my understanding, I don't have any reason to think otherwise. Um, but unless something has really gone on, we, we, the Facility Subcommittee hasn't met for a while now, um, due to everything going on and scheduling, but we want to uh, get a, I guess, get a bead from the Facilities Department on, on a completion date for B-three and B-four. Um, I believe, you know, twenty-twenty-two, sometime in that year is supposed to be the completion for that. So we should, if that's the case, it should be in the plan. Um, and um, finally, when, when we talk about um, on page forty-nine, you talked about hiring a community engagement facilitator for customer service. Um, I, I love the idea of customer service and, and, and sometimes education is a service industry like everything else. Um, I, I don't know how many spots in here, like I said, I haven't read every box, but how many spots require hiring somebody? But are these things going to eventually, if we approve the plan as is, are we committed to these hires, or are these up for discussion later on, depending on budget?
Yeah, these, these are all um, up for, for discussion, so, yeah.
I just, because I, I, I like the plan, I'm willing to move forward with it, I don't want to lock ourselves in, oh, well, you know, you also hired five different people in this plan, so you have to hire them now in order to make the plan work. So we just have to be able to think, depending on, subject to our budget, you know, and at the time when it happens, because, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen in the next three years. Um, with at least the county, the county tax rule, so. Um, anyway, those, those are my initial comments. Um, thank you, thank you for rounding about over to me, um, thank you for everyone for presenting today and working on this. Um, it's a great step forward for us to look, not only to, you know, it's a physical representation of, we know what we're doing, we just have to do it now, and I like that, I like that approach to, to government, so. I will zip it now, thank you.
Hey, thank you for that, Mr. Margot, uh, Mr. Spitz.
Thank you. Um, well, first, I want to, uh, I want to compliment Dr. Drolle, do I pronounce your name right? I hope so. Um, and anyway.
It's Drolle.
Drolle?
Yes, I'm so Cheverley.
Dr. Drolle, uh, you really, really uh, covered a lot of ground here, to say the least. Um, and all of the people who've been involved, uh, it's uh, it appears at first glance, and that's what we're doing today, by the way, the board is looking at this, I'm looking at this as a first glance. Um, and it appears to be an excellent framework for a three-year strategic plan. I haven't had the opportunity to, to delve into the, all the details that are in these action plans, and I, I need that opportunity. I need that opportunity before I'd be able to vote on it. Uh, I can't, I can't even comment about the details because I haven't read them, frankly. Um, but, um, I concur with um, frequent audits and updates in the, in, in the plan, in the strategic plan. And uh, you know, we, we just, uh, I think we all need to uh, look at the details, if we're gonna suggest any modifications or additions after this, after this study session and before uh, the approval date. Um, regarding the monitoring and account of, oh, and the accountability, uh, I'd like to say this, uh, in, in my five-decade business career, I participated in developing and accomplishing many, many uh, action plans. And I will say that uh, the successes that I've had in my business career were due to those action plans. Um, so I'm a great believer in action plans. Um, and I would like to say that I believe it's essential to have one person overseeing and being responsible for each task. And one person overseeing and being responsible for that particular action plan. And uh, then uh, the interim progress reports can be very specific. Uh, they, they are reported by an individual who is responsible. Um, that, by the way, the person who's responsible for each task can definitely be one of those who is involved group. But if you're just gonna leave it to a group to be responsible, um, you can miss the mark. Uh, that's, that's my opinion. Um, so I'm gonna suggest, gonna suggest that you consider having one person who is responsible for each task, and one person who is responsible for each action plan. Lastly, I, I agree with uh, with uh, Mr. Margot's comments on diversity. And I have some ideas that uh, would uh, for tangible actions in that area, but today's not the right time, I think, for me to uh, bring them up. So um, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz, Ms. Walker.
Hi, so, Dr. Drolle, thank you so much for your leadership on this, what an outstanding document. Um, and to everyone that was involved, really at all levels, all of the volunteers from the community that played a role, all of our, you know, cabinet admin, staff, faculty, and leadership, um, and, and board member. Um, it really, it clearly was a very heavy lift, and there were obvious uh, contributions by all of the different stakeholders, so, I mean, really tremendous job. It takes a lot of time and a lot of vision to execute something like this. Um, two years ago, uh, at the first CSBA conference that I went to, I went to a seminar that talked about setting priorities and then funding your priorities. It was actually a budgeting seminar. And um, it was kind of remarkable because I hadn't really seen anything, at, at least in that short time, um, in this role, that reflected that. And, and like any good organization, if you can't set your priorities and fund your priorities, then it's gonna be very difficult to reach your goals. Um, so this is just, this, this takes us such a far distance, and it is incredible that it was such a collaborative effort. I think it builds in accountability all by itself, just because there were so many people playing roles. Um, I am, I'm just completely tickled to see so much focus on maximizing community engagement because that's kind of what we're all about, is making sure all of our, you know, community stakeholders are represented in the work that we're doing here. Um, and in our ongoing work, and um, I agree with, with Mr. Margot and, and largely with Mr. Spitz also, that um, there, there are things that we're gonna need to look at and probably tweak a little bit here and there, but overall, this is just an enormous um, um, undertaking, and I am, I'm really proud to have my name associated with it. I think this is something we've been badly um, lacking in terms of, you know, having direction, we've kind of been like a boat floating without um, particular navigation guiding us, and this is really, this really represents that. This is an opportunity to really tie not only our agendas, thank you, Dr. Breggy, for saying that, because that's a beautiful thing, I love that organization, um, our agenda items and justify how those, you know, how we're doing the business of the district tied to our goals and our plan, um, but also our funding. I think that's, that's a part that people a lot of times miss here, we can set a lot of goals, but if we can't afford them, then they're not attainable. Um, and this presents a really comprehensive way of achieving these goals, um, in, in measured ways and in, in steps. Um, I love that it's a living, breathing document that we're gonna be able to, um, you know, make some adjustments to and, and be flexible with as we, as we move forward, but I'm really, I'm just really proud of this work. I gotta be honest, this is a really tremendous, um, I think, success, a great step in the right direction, um, for everyone, really kind of getting on the same page and saying, okay, you know, we either fail as a team or succeed as a team, and this, to me, represents a, a huge step in the right direction for that kind of success. So um, thank you to everybody involved, I think this was just a, a, a really fabulous, this is a fabulous outcome so far, I know we still have a little bit of work left to do to refine it, um, but I'm just incredibly appreciative of this team and all of your contributions.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, so I want to echo the sentiments expressed by everyone who's already had a chance to speak about the um, the strategic plan. Um, I remember when I first ran for school board, I ran on, on, on the platform of developing a strategic plan, and I'm happy that it's finally come to fruition. Because as I was made aware, we didn't have one, I think, for over a decade, which is baffling to me that, you know, we, we spend money, we spend a lot of resources in making the operation, um, you know, run on a yearly basis, annually basis, and we didn't have a roadmap, and so this is really, um, I think this becomes front and center for our district as far as, um, you know, how we plan and spend our dollars, as Mrs. Walker Schuman just said. But I did have a question, and this is just a general question, so whoever wants to take, and I have other questions. Um, so when, and I had, I've, I read it last night, and I read it again this morning, but I, I also need to just really digest and have an opportunity to really think about a lot of moving parts as it relates, so I, I echo the sentiments of my colleague, Mr. Spitz. I would like to really take a little bit more time as a board member and really focus on, you know, these areas very seriously. Um, but this is great work, and um, I don't want to diminish, you know, the, the grandeur of, of what you've all produced, and it's a very, it's a very important document, so thank you. My first question is, now that we have a document, you know, we don't want it to become a shelf document, we want it to become a live, livable document. And in order for that to happen, I, I believe today is the first step in having a discussion about the document, but what plans do you have as management to make sure? Because I think the, the biggest priority for me, um, just looking at this document, is the academic side of it, right? Or even if we're talking about diversity, how do we infuse that into the classroom? And so what, what mechanisms or plans have you all thought? Um, besides just communicating and saying, here's our master, here's our um, strategic plan? How do you involve others to participate and make these goals happen?
Well, I think the first step is, uh, and Dr. Drolle, you can feel free to jump in anytime, um, with uh, you're kind of an expert in, in, in helping to develop these, but I can tell you what we've talked about is that, um, you know, after approval, the first thing is, you know, people have to know and understand what the plan is and what we're doing and what we're looking for. But I think that, I know the word evidence is, is somewhat of a strong word, but, you know, it's, not only is there the accountability piece, but we want to be able to look and collect the evidence that we are meeting our goals. And so, um, I love the idea that Mr. Spitz uh, mentioned, um, in having that, that, um, you know, kind of that point person for each of the, the areas, and, um, and then giving updates. But it's not just saying we've met it, it's, this is certainly not something that you check off uh, on a box. I mean, if it's, if we're clearly, and I'll, I'll use the example for me, uh, with the leadership uh, piece of this, and um, you know, coming up with the decision-making model, and um, and also uh, involving staff, um, that, that's something that, that, you know, to show evidence of that, um, eh, this isn't something that you can just say that you did, I mean, you, you have to show. And, and so, everything that's in here is, we're able to measure and show. Um, and we will do that uh, from the very beginning. From the moment there's approval in our, in our, in our strategic plan, that's when we will then go forward, and then we will also then, um, you know, have, start to collect this evidence, um, to see if, we, we may have overshot a goal here too, I'm not, we're not sure. Uh, but we want to be able to, to, you know, and that's part of the, the revision statement. Um, with the diversity, the cultural, like, you know, we may find, just as an example, that, um, and this is how you know that you're actually involving others, is that, that I envision that goal to get um, much more specific. I mean, is that going to lead us to, you know, implicit bias and racism and, you know, where, where's that gonna lead us? But, but we're gonna be able to show that, I mean, every, every goal is, an objective is a story. And so, we're gonna be able to just be able to support that very naturally, um, not just a document. Um, it's going to be supported by a variety of different ways. Um, but first of all, it, you know, we have to teach people, we have to share with people, so, and get people involved in this process. Now that there's a kickoff, now it's teaching people and then also sharing with people and then revising this uh, based on, you know, because you get deeper into the process.
I would just like to add, um, I really like your idea, uh, Dr. Breggy, about it's a story. And so when you think about all of the communication that you do throughout the district, you have your webpage, you have your board agenda, you have each principal's newsletter to people, you've got all those committees that will be meeting on the regular basis. So there's a lot of avenues for communication, and so you tell a story about each of the goals um, or the action plans for that particular year, and you talk about, this is what we're doing in mathematics, and let me tell you a story about a student who, whose light bulb went on because the teacher started with this instructional strategy. And so you start building these stories throughout the district, and you also write about them in each of your documents about, we, we've really been working on the diversity issue, and these are some of the things that we have implemented in the district. So that everything becomes transparent and public to people. And you're, you're assigning, when you're, when you're talking about things at the board meeting, you say things like, this is according to the action plan that we have for this year, that we're trying to accomplish. This is why we need funding, because this action plan, and you'll notice in your document that several of the action plans do not have any money involved in them, um, uh, attached to them yet, because input is needed from the board to talk about, well, how much money is in the budget to do it? So all of your conversations, all of the stories that you tell throughout the year, all come back to the strategic plan. And that's why it's so important for the LCAP to have the same action plans, that school site councils develop the same action plans in addition to others that are unique to that school, but thinking about, are we all on the same track? And so the community starts hearing more and more about the strategic plan.
Thank you. Um, thank you for that. Um, I have a question also. Um, I noticed, I really appreciate you all putting professional development as a goal and a section here. What I, I think needs to be considered, especially if we're gonna be talking about dollars, and this just kind of tailgates um, Dr. Drolle's uh, most recent comments about, you know, we need to have board input and attach that input in some form and have it connect to, to dollars. Uh, you know, when we think about professional development, we, we do this on a concurrent basis. Um, you know, in the summer, every, throughout the entire year. And one of the things that has come up and emerged as part of our conversations as board members in meetings has been, maybe we can, we can have a calendar, a calendar that we. a calendar that we can point to that, you know, provides information about staff development that is capturing the essence of what we're trying to achieve here through our strategic plan. I, I think to have that be placed and be, would be, would be the first step to really organizing, you know, vision for professional development. And then of course, accountability as it relates to fiscal dollars. So I think that we're, we're here now, this is great. But I think that not having a calendar with PD really continues to, as a board member, I would tell you, when we're authorizing professional development, whether it's a standalone item or under the umbrella of the consent calendar, it's difficult to really follow that big picture. And, you know, what it is we're getting out of that, out of that training, out of the PD opportunity that we're, you know, we have a date reserved or, or dollars. And so again, a, a, a calendar of some sort would be so helpful, I think, going forward for this district. That would be one, one piece. Under maintenance and operations, I also noticed, I agree with Dr., with Mr. Marco, he three before were not added, it should be added, so I'm happy that that's going to be corrected. I also did not see the oil wells. That was a big piece of information and considerable dollars were put into that. And I, if I understand it correctly, from last, the last piece of information received, those should be, we should be concluding with those projects this month or, or soon before school begins. So that should be captured here, because we've had such a public discussion about these. Let's see, I made a few other notes. Yes, going to, so here's a question for Mrs. Kaver or Mr. Bugby. And this is an academic question, or Mr. Allen, Mr. Me, whoever wants to take it. So I, I see that you took math as an area of focus for academics. My question is, how would this be different? I'm just playing devil's advocate. How is this different from like the LCAP that we submit every year? Because we do focus on every academic area, not just math. But we do say in that LCAP, and we do make a commitment, that students are going to receive a years of instruction and then meet those benchmarks and matriculate to the next level. So as I was reading this, I was thinking, how is this different from like the report cards? You know, where the report cards actually explain to you, you know, that here are the benchmarks, or you know, your student didn't meet, but did not meet the benchmark, or did meet the assessments, or is continuing to, to, to make progress in that benchmark or, or period of, you know, that is captured in that particular time. So as I read this, I thought, okay, how is this different from what we've been doing? I know that you focus in math, but just taking math alone, I mean, how, how is that different? Because I didn't, I didn't see that really hitting me as this is different from what we've been doing. We always say we're making progress towards the next level.
So the difference between what we've previously done and what we're currently trying to do through the strategic plan is the strategic plan is a district-wide goals. And so in previous, we consistently would state things like, and remember, this administration wasn't part of the previous LCAP right, that it was stated that the math teachers would work on math to try to increase a year's worth of growth. So it fell solely on a singleton department to move really district-wide data. And with the strategic plan, like Principal Kaver had mentioned, jumping into the section, that we're making math a district-wide goal for all. So how do we all support our students in increasing and catching up to the place that we want them to be at in math? And then keep that momentum forward? So can we provide professional development around fiscal education? Teachers being able to infuse some math concepts within their conversation or in their instruction? How can we leverage VAPA teachers to support moving our students' math data forward? You know, arts aligns into the whole STEAM concept. So it's science, technology, engineering, art and math. So how do we, how do we bring and close that loop now? And that's part of the strategic plan.
I, I think another thing that's important, that's a little different is that this has structure that's district-wide strategies, some concrete strategies that have been outlined, like learning targets, like assessment-driven and data-driven decision-making. And I think that that is something that is actually memorialized into this plan, which is a little bit different moving forward.
Okay, anybody else? That's good to know. I just, I know that so much of our conversations and sometimes when we have educational services updates, we talk about benchmarks and planning. And we do that also in our, you know, our school site plans. But I, I do understand, I, I appreciate the point well made by Mr. Allen that this is, you know, moving the district forward in the same, with the same direction and focus. And, but I still think, I'm just going to say, maybe there's a way to really, you know, provide, you know, the essence of how that's different. Because again, I, I do, I'm just going to say, as a parent, I think that you all make a very good case year after year, saying that we're providing benchmarks and assessments and that the students starting at one level and moving on to the level. We do that hopefully throughout, we've been doing that successfully. I think I want to, I want to be able to see how, how you're orchestrating this to, to provide that vision, you know. And I, I'm not see, I'm not sure that I'm seeing it, but let me go back and really digest and look for that in my, in the documents. I will do that, but just think about that.
Do you want me to jump in with this? I think-
Who's that? Mr. Bugby?
Yeah, at the elementary level, the data chats that we're doing, teachers are really now focusing on the strengths of each individual kid and the holes that they might have. Within those holes at the Title I schools, the Title I intervention teachers are making a huge difference in filling the holes to catch the kids up so that they're at grade level and they can all move forward at the same rate. So it's very important that the teachers are completely taking ownership of where the kids are, finding the holes, they differentiate within the classroom. But then those intervention teachers and the ELD teachers, because math now, if you really look at the new Common Core math standards, they are so language-based that the ELD teachers have actually jumped onto the math bandwagon also. Because those kids may not be able to grasp the math concepts with the amount of language that comes with adding three plus five.
Can I also add too? I think Mrs. Hacker, it's in, just for the rest of the board, it, it's part of our responsibility to, because I, I don't think that we could expect anyone to look at this and really kind of see into the, the teaching and learning world that we live in. So that's why I truly believe it's our responsibility to, you know, we have to make this document come alive. You know, our, our board agendas should have more items about teaching and learning. And so throughout the year, this is where we start to highlight some of the incredible work that our staff is doing that, that could show more, more of a visual of, 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 of what's happening. And so not only just the data piece, but, you know, the instructional practices that we talked about. And, and that's what should really be embedded into our board agendas moving forward is more teaching and learning, more instruction. And, and throughout the year after this is approved, you know, make this document come alive so that people understand what these things mean.
Thank you, Dr. Ray, I could not agree with you more. And my final comment is having, tying student activities or student, student growth with diversity and culture. And so I, I, I did feel by reading, just by reading it this morning, I thought more along the lines of what Mr. Mario kind of described. And I didn't feel it was deep enough in capturing what you all trying to provide or aim towards. And I will say this as, you know, in connection to what I think was mentioned at the last board meeting when we were talking about the agenda about, you know, looking at our curriculum. And Mr. Mark was led, then led that discussion. Sometimes I've heard, I, I received feedback from parents who, who either come to this country, you know, during the course of their child's obviously education, somewhere in the middle, not at the beginning. And so there's a long language barrier or a culture, a cultural barrier. Or even if, if, if they're just a group of a, from a minority group that is, that is here in our district, they don't feel, and this is more, I guess, this is more specific to the high school. They don't feel that Beverly Hills High School does a good job of tapping into resources, not the ones that we offer, but the ones that are offered, you know, within, like outside of the district, whether it's local, the state of California, or nationally. And I'm talking about, you know, there's mentoring opportunities for students, there's internships, there's sometimes, you know, areas of study during summer programs, college awareness about college funds and scholarships that they can tap into. These, there's a wealth of resources that are out there that we're missing for these populations. And so I think we need to lend more attention to this so that we provide support, so that we do provide, you know, relevant growth when we're measuring success and opportunity for these students. And, and we do, we're doing that, I think, very well across the board. But we're not focusing, I think, for these special pops. And even special education, parents have said, oh, I, I was part of this program and I did the research on my own. It'd be good if the district provided this information for other parents and students who have similar experiences as, as we, we, we do in this district. So I think we're all trying to do, you know, move our, our district forward and off, and offer a wealth of opportunities for our students. But I think we, when we talk about student growth and when we talk about diversity, if it really is going to mean something, I think you need to connect those two things together. Because it's about access and awareness and, you know, providing these opportunities to students. And hopefully they will, they will take advantage of these opportunities because they're there and we don't need to recreate the wheel. But we, I don't think we do a good job in paying attention to these things. And I think that's where the disconnect is. And we're missing because, we're missing the boat because other schools are really well tapped into those resources and we're not taking advantage of them for our student pops. So I hope that makes sense. That makes sense? If anyone wants me to clarify something, I'm happy to. But I think that that makes, I hope that makes sense. And with that, I want to say that this is, this document will not be released to the community today. This is, Doc, Mr. Spitz, I, I see you and I believe Mrs. Marcus also wants to speak, right? Mrs. Marcus, because you said that at the beginning. But I just wanted to end with this. Thank you, I'm, I'm going to try to be so brief in my comments. I just wanted to say thank you again to the team for putting this together. I'm going to defer the, the, the meeting back to Mr. Spitz and then Mrs. Marcus. And then, Mr. Dr. Braggy, if you want to explain how you're going to issue a final document to the community or more or less when that will happen, that would probably be helpful for us to know. So, Mr. Spitz.
Yes, I'd like to discuss a process for bringing the board up to the point of voting on the document. I think each of us, well, I think each of us may have some, some comments and questions after, when we get into, read the details that are in these action plans. And so I, I was wondering whether it might be helpful if each, if, if, if each of us, if we had a certain number of days, let's say, for each of us to send in our comments and questions after digesting the document, send in our comments and questions to Dr. Braggy. And then you can take it from there. Either he can, or he feels like revising the document to, 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 to meet those, those suggestions that he agrees with. And then somehow bring it, then bring it to the board for a final discussion and approval, which I don't think should be this Tuesday. I think it should be the, our next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Mr. Spitz, we'll talk about that very shortly. I'm sure Dr. Braggy has some ideas and would like to rebuttal. And before we do that though, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Marcus. Thank you.
Well, Mel, Dr. Mr. Spitz, you just took the words right out of my mouth. And I had said that as I was listening to the comments by the other board members, exactly what I was feeling at the same time. I just want to make a couple of things clear. When I first came to the district, I remember those meetings at the board where teachers would present various curriculum ideas and things they were doing in the class to the board members. And it was a very exciting, I think, Mr. Spitz, you remember those days? Many teachers spent hours preparing presentations to the board about things that they were doing in the class. And it was a wonderful, wonderful way for the board to be aware of what was happening in the classroom. And that's something that I think we should, as I, as Dr. Braggy would agree to, that we should be doing again, because he did mention it. And it did happen from when I first came here. I just want to make one other quick amount of comment. And that is the overlap of all of the plans, the action plans and the, the goals and the strategic plan of not only from, from the academic to the technology to the professional development. You cannot put these in separate items, they have to all work together. And I think that's something that we need to keep in mind. Because the professional development, you can, to teach the technology that will affect the math classes or the other classes and so on. So do not decar, or car, car, what's the big word I want? The, the car, carpentalize, no, not carp, what's the word I want to?
Like, like cart?
What?
Cartmental, departmental.
Yeah, I just want you to feel that, that this is something we need to keep in mind and that they do not operate as separate entities. And that was the comment that I wanted to make. So with that, I turn it back to you, Dr. Braggy and Mrs. Hacker.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus, and thank you, Mrs. Chisholm. Let's see here. Dr. Braggy, you are going to tell us. I, so, so there's, there's, Mr. Spitz would like us, and I think he's right. We have to, it sounds like we still need some time to digest this document, have an opportunity to make our final comments or adjustments and then have that final discussion, I think, amongst the five of us, because we all have to agree or disagree. And we want to do this in a timely manner, of course. We wouldn't want to wait another year before this happens, because then they will be outdated. But, Dr. Braggy, do you want to come up with a timeline? Do you, you want to, you want to email us? We can do that on the side. We don't need to just, you're probably thinking about, about a lot of things right now. But I agree, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't happen next Tuesday. I totally agree with Mr. Spitz. I don't think we're ready for next Tuesday to have a discussion and to adopt this project, this document. But I do believe at some point, we need to do that. Not project, it is a project, Mr. Kestner, Ellen, you're laughing. But I think it's, there's an opportunity for us to adopt this, 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 this product at some point soon. So, Dr. Braggy, do you want to lead us with some dates or a process for this?
So I, I think that that's a, a great process and one that I would suggest as well. I mean, we took some notes during, during this session, but I know that after you spend some more time with it, you'll have some additional information for us. I, I don't want to give a date now, because I don't, I don't know what, how much information you're going to provide us. And so is, is Mrs. Marcus indicated as well, you know, it's, it isn't just picking one, one area. And so because everything is connected and interdependent, interdependent on each other, that we would then get together again to, to look at the impact of, you know, like, Mr. Roach would need to be somewhere because of the financial impact. So we would bring everybody back again and then share that information and then, and then have a discussion. So I, I'd rather wait till I get that feedback from you and then we can set that date. Because I don't want to rush you and I also want this to be meaningful. You know, the, the word that comes to mind when I think about this plan with everything that we've said is intentionality. And so this has to have intentionality. It, it, this shouldn't be a plan just to get it done. So it's, I want you to take time to, to review it and share with us. And then I also want to take a little bit of time with, with my team as well and, and make sure we're all together. Because sometimes things have come up where we didn't realize that it impacted another area. And so, but because we were together, we were able to have a really meaningful conversation. So I like the process of, of you taking some time, getting back to us. So I like the process of, of you taking some time, getting back to us and sharing that information with us so that we can take a look at it.
Okay, so we will look to receive a communication from you to give us next steps and maybe you and I can talk about some dates and just really get this done. So I don't have any further questions, anybody else, before we go? I really want to say that I acknowledge that Mr. Allen is here today. That's, thank you for being here, Mr. Allen. It's nice to see you this summer. And of course, just to Mrs. Kaver, Mr. Bugby and the team, Mr. Me is here, I think he's still here with us in some form. And thank you for leading us, Dr. Jolay. I hope that we'll see you again soon. And thank you for all your work and your leadership and vision and Dr. Bregy for leading, of course, as always, and to the board. And we'll see you soon. And we're going to be convening again. So this meeting is adjourned or study session is adjourned at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day.
Bye.
Have a great day.